Tuesday, March 11th, 2025, and this is a regular meeting of the City of Asbury Park Zoning Board of Adjustment. Chairman Avaloni, will you please call this meeting to order?
I'd be happy to. This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notice and posted on the municipal bulletin board and municipal website. All notices are filed with the Board Secretary. Official action may be taken on the following matters before this is called. I ask everyone with a cellphone to please mute it for the duration of this meeting, and this meeting is being recorded by AP-TV. Roll call.
Wendy Glassman is recused from this application. Daniel Harris?
Here.
Russell Lewis is recused from this application. Jill Potter?
Here.
Tim Slick?
Here.
Natalie Passerini?
Here.
John Hall?
Here.
Vice Chair Scully?
Here.
Chairman Avaloni?
Here. All right. We have one application tonight, 614 Fifth Avenue. Christopher Viola. Mr. Carris, welcome back.
Good to be back. By May, we have the applicant.
Well, we carried from the last meeting.
Oh, that's correct.
Your notices were due at the last meeting. We carried the application this week. You don't have to renew those.
All right. What I'm going to do is just initially go through what it is that we are looking for, and then I have two witnesses tonight, my client, Chris Viola, and also our planner, that's the body of the application. As indicated, my client is Chris Viola, the property is at 614 Fifth Ave. It's a three-family home. It's in the R2 zone. It is not a historical district. The proposal is simply to add a second floor deck. The roof in which the deck is located is an existing fiberglass-type roof, flat roof. That will not change. The door was previously approved there as a matter of place to add the railing on. Now, when we go through the property, I'll notice there's little any outdoor space. This will add needed outdoor space to the property. Because it is a three-family, it is a legal three-family, a D2 variance according to the board's plan, it is required as an expansion of a nonconforming use. The irony is this: When you have in a R2 area, a two-family, you are allowed to add an ADU, and I'll have testimony from the planner, you are allowed to add an ADU, accessory dwelling unit, under the ordinance that was passed last year here in Asbury Park. So legally, if this was a two-family, you could convert it to a three-family with exactly the same configuration as it is right now, and put on that roof deck, and you would not need any type of D2 variance.
That's not true.
Can you expand from a two, if it's permitted to?
No, but that's what he said.
Let me just say, if it is a two-family house, and it's R2, you are allowed to add an ADU unit to it.
Yes.
Accessory dwelling.
So to make it basically a three-family-type property, two, the existing two, plus the third. Certain requirements, as long as the owner occupies premises, it can be within the same building, it has to have a separate entrance. So all of these are in this property. You would then be allowed to do a roof deck. It would not be, please, let me finish. It would not be an expansion of a nonconforming use at that point, because the two-family plus an ADU would be legal. Here, because it is a designated three-family, it's not a two-family plus an ADU.
Then the whole thing is moot, Mr. Carris.
It would be. It would be if it was a two-family.
Your argument is moot. It's a three-family. Let's move on.
No. The reason I bring it up is because the criteria that we look at is whether or not the plan, the intended improvements are negligible or insubstantial, thus creating an exception to an expansion of a nonconforming use. There are two arguments we're making. Number one, if you can do it anyway, as two-family plus an ADU is negligible. But if the board finds it is not negligible nor insubstantial, we would assert that we would be entitled to a D2 variance nonetheless. All right. Just wanted to lay that out there in how we view this application. All right?
As it stands now, this is a D2 variance.
It is. It's the board's position. It is a D2 variance. We take the position, number one, it is insubstantial.
You've applied for a variance, for a D2 variance, Mr. Carris. You are not doing an interpretation of the ordinance. You're asking for an interpretation. You're saying if the board deemed so. That is, again, moot. You're here for a variance, correct?
We are here for a D2 variance, but we are allowed to assert that it is insubstantial and negligible. We have the right to do that, make that legal argument. There's nothing that stops us from doing it.
As part of your criteria for the grant of the D2 variance.
Correct. With that being said, I have two witnesses, as I indicated on the phone. The one is Chris Viola, who is the owner of the property and our planner, that we're going to grant.
Please do.
Sir, please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear affirm, and the testimony about to give this marriage, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. State your name for the record and call it.
Christopher Viola.
Thank you. Put your hand down. Let me swear in my staff. Please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear affirm, the testimony about to give this marriage, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your names for the record and your affiliation with the board.
Don Miller, board planner.
Jerry Farida, board engineer.
Thank you, Jack.
Chris, can you please tell me your affiliation with the property?
I'm the owner of that property.
Okay. You've been the owner of that property for how long?
Since 2015.
And can you describe the property for us?
It's a three-family house on the corner of Fifth and Bond.
And it is a legal three-family house, am I correct?
I purchased it in 2015 as a three-family house. That's correct.
Do you reside there, Mr. Viola?
I do, yes.
And you've resided there ever since?
Since I purchased the property.
Okay. And the application tonight is to add a deck on the second floor of the property. Am I correct?
That's correct.
And why should you describe the second floor of the property?
When I purchased the property, we renovated the apartments on the first floor initially, and then we renovated the second floor. We converted an existing roof that was over the front porch into a flat roof, fiberglass, and that was done in 2016.
And did you get a permit to do that?
Yes, we did.
What about the door there?
That was approved in 2016 when we did the construction.
You received a permit to do the deck?
To do a flat roof.
To do a flat roof on the porch?
On the second floor, covering a first-floor porch. So it was an existing, when I purchased it, there's a first-floor porch.
Do you have that permit?
For the construction?
Yes.
To convert it.
To convert it from a roof to a deck?
Not the conversion. We're not talking about conversion. Just there's a construction permit to allow you to put a flat roof.
That's what I meant, the conversion from a regular porch roof to a flat roof.
Do we have the permit here?
No, I don't have it on me, but I consider that to have it in the file.
And what was the point of doing a flat roof?
With the intent to do a future deck.
Okay, well, I have the permit.
Okay.
And is that what the permit said, with the intent to use it as a balcony or as an outdoor space?
No, it's not. We are here because it's not allowed to use as a deck.
Okay.
So a permit was granted to do a flat roof?
By no means granted.
Donna, how was it? How was it?
Actually, the permit is to do renovations of the house. Unfortunately, the plans are not available, so we don't know the full scope of what the exterior renovations were permitted. I don't know if it was actually approved to change the style of the roof. It may have been. But the permit specifically says no second-floor deck.
That is correct.
So why would you do a flat roof on a porch if it has no balcony?
Well, the indicator, the intent was at some point to have a deck.
And then you went ahead and did it.
Right. But we're here now in order to get variance relief for that deck.
I understand that, Mr. Carris, but I'm a little lost in the woods right now. You've got a permit to do a flat roof, but they told you?
Well, construction permit.
Right. I understand.
Zone permit.
But the zoning permit was denied.
A zoning permit to do renovations of the building.
So it was a zoning permit.
Which led them to get a building permit to do the construction work that they did.
But it, and it specifically stated a flat roof on the porch?
It said no second-floor deck. So, again, you don't have the plans, so I don't know if... They showed adding a door, changing the style of the roof. I don't know what was involved in the scope of the renovations that he asked for. The permit just says, Barbara said, I think that Barbara Van Wagner, wrote on it, no second-floor deck. So I'm inclined to believe that the plans indicated making a roof flat and putting a deck, doing the railings, adding a door, whatever access. But we don't have those plans, so I don't know.
The permit specifically said no patio or no second-floor deck.
And that was back in 2016?
Correct.
And that's when you put the railings up and everything, or that was?
No, the railings did not go until during COVID, when I could not get a small size.
And when was that? COVID was a couple of years, 20?
Yep.
So you just went ahead and did that?
I did.
Did someone from the city come out and inspect the railings? The whole thing, the deck?
So the construction in 2016, that was CO'd and that was completed, and there is a CO for all of that.
Okay, well, when you put the deck on, did the city come out and look at that also?
They inspected the flat roof. They then never inspected the deck. So in 2016, they inspected. There's a CO for all of that construction.
So you did the railings after the CO?
Correct. During COVID in 2020, so years after.
But you knew in 16 that you needed a permit, but during COVID?
That is correct, but...
You didn't get a permit for the?
But you can't, the board is not allowed to consider it.
No, I'm just asking.
We're trying to get the timeline.
That's fine, yeah, I'm just trying to keep it straight in my head.
So in 2016, you got the building permit, went ahead and did the construction, did the flat roof, did what it was allowed to do. During COVID, he added that rail to the outdoor space. Am I correct?
That's correct. But knowing the permit did not allow for a second floor?
And you understand that, where you're now looking to have a second-floor deck. You understand?
Okay.
So the only thing that makes it a deck is the rail?
Correct. Exactly.
Well, the flat.
No, the change from the hip to the flat, which may have been permitted under the permit, I don't know, again, because I don't have the drawings, the conversion of a window to a door may not be...
To a door is the predecessor.
I have those drawings, and I have those drawings that I can supply.
So again, under the community design regulations, which were in force at that time, changing the window to a door would have not also been permitted. I don't know what Barbara did. Maybe she's, you know, approved it anyway, and there was just, you know, yeah, you can't have that now, come and get a variance later. Maybe that was, you know...
There's nothing in the file that we can draw up.
I don't have the plans in the file. I only have the permits.
Chris, yes, construction. I didn't know that we would need them tonight.
But, I mean, the point is, you know, so they're here asking for approval now for the thing that he built.
For adding the rail or something.
So...
If I could, in 16, when the town gave you the CO, that door just had a Juliet balcony, correct? From the plans here?
But did it still have the window?
No, it had a door. It was inspected with a door and a railing.
Just a railing in front of it, not to be... Thank you.
All right. What I'm going to do, since you're making references here, I'll mark also, we'll mark these plans as A1 for identification. Let me have you take a look at what's been marked as A1 for identification. These are the plans that we prepared for you. Am I correct?
That's correct.
And they show exactly what it is that you're looking to do on the second floor. Am I correct? That's necessary, so we just testified. Correct. I'm looking at A2.01. These are showing the front elevations that you're looking to...
That's correct.
What I'm going to do is there are a few photos that you submitted, one photo, and I'll mark that for you. Two, just so we have it. And this reflects that flat roof, the door, and the rail. Am I correct? And it's the addition of the railings that we're looking to add in order to make this a usable outdoor deck. Am I correct?
Mr. Carris, I, you said looking to add. They've already been added, correct?
But they're not approved. That we're looking to...
Right, yeah, I just want to make it correct for the record. Thank you.
On the property now, is there any outdoor space available either for your use or the other tenants that you have in this building?
There's the front porch that you shared. And there's the driveway in the back.
Aside from that, is there any other space?
Isn't there a patio?
Is there a patio on the back?
That apparently is not, doesn't have the proper setback?
Is there a patio on the back?
There is. Well, that was included in zoning in 2023. We did the fence, which they updated, and we adjusted the setback that you were referencing because the pavers are bunked too close to the fence.
But if you have pavers, you have an outside area.
It was a driveway that I converted to a...
So there's an outside area in the back?
Is there an outside area, or is that part?
Off of the driveway in the back.
Okay. How big is that outside area?
Probably, let's say, the driveway is 15 by 10.
And now it'd be more like 20 by 20.
Yeah.
And now it'd be for all the...
For the survey.
For the survey. And we're marking the survey as 345. And the patio area wouldn't be referenced, right? And this is the area that has a top-floor patio?
Yes.
Is that shared by all the tenants?
They have all of them existing.
Including you, sure, you're sure. Now, on that second floor, who would have access to the deck?
That was just me.
And not the others. Be your own personal outdoor space, and the other portions, the outdoor space, be for the tenant.
Correct.
So all the questions I have. One more. In terms of, sorry, are there roof meters on that area you're looking to have approved as an outdoor deck?
Yeah, in 2016, there were others installed on the fascia of the building.
Saying you're not looking at any changes?
Or existing, you know.
Not looking to increase or change any locations, you're going to keep that as your property.
That's correct. No questions left.
Mr. Carris, is your client looking for approval of the changing of the columns as well?
We, again, we don't know what the scope of the architectural modifications were approved by Barbara Van Wagner as the zoning officer in 2016, 2016, for the building renovations. So it is very possible that she administratively approved the style of the porch room and the columns.
Okay, thank you.
In my report, I reference those differences just to make the distinction between what it used to look like, what it is now, for the purpose of evaluating. Again, the expansion part qualifying as, you know, relieved from the community design standards.
Okay, thanks, Donna.
Let me ask you a question. When the construction was finished on the building from the 2016, construction permits that were issued, were there inspections ever done?
Yes.
And were the permits imposed?
Yes.
Did the zoning officer do an inspection, or just the construction official?
Zoning has been back for the tenants on the first floor for their rentals, for, as tenants turn over, we had inspected.
Those are COs, right?
Right, COs inspected for tenant.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, but the second floor was only inspected by construction.
And the changing of the columns from what they were to what they are now, that construction work, I understand you say that the construction official came back at the end. Did the zoning officer inspect any of that at all? Did he give you a certificate of compliance or anything?
There was nothing. For the first-floor railings, which we're referencing that porch and the columns, that was never re-inspected.
Okay.
Mr. Viola, let me ask you a question. I have to understand, knowing that you didn't have the permit to make that a deck, why did you go ahead and do it?
Don't go to the check, because that's not a consideration for the board. That's not a proper consideration.
I think we have to focus. We have to focus on whether or not he proves his case for variances. The question of his intent, whether or not he had permission, whether or not he violated city ordinances, I think there's a case pending in the municipal court where that is properly venue, and that will be dealt with over there. But for our purposes, our job is to determine whether or not he needs the burden proof for the variances that he needs for this project. And if he does, and if he doesn't, that's fine too.
Thank you, Jack.
Yeah. I don't want to see a record get befuddled with that, because that would not serve our purposes.
Okay.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
So, Mr. Viola, just to be clear, the second-story deck, I guess we're calling it, or patio, you would be the only one that would have access to that, correct?
Correct.
The other two tenants would not have access to that. It's solely for your purpose?
We occupy the second and third floors of the building, and we're the only ones that have access to that second and third floor.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Clarify, so the tenants are on the first floor, and you're on the second and the...
Correct. So the first floor is a studio and a one-bedroom. And then there's the farthest entrance on the left is our entrance, and that's the second and third floor.
Two units on the first floor, one unit on the second and third.
Any further questions for Mr. Viola?
If you didn't have that balcony, would you have any hardship or suffer in any way?
That's not the criteria that we're...
I'm just asking.
She wants out. Remember, she's asking you why you want the balcony?
Why do you want?
Man, we use it six months a year as our... Yeah. Hardship is a, I think there's some semantics in there, so I don't know how you want to define hardship, but it's something that we feel is one of the reasons we stayed, we stayed in the house for 10 years. I mean, and having used it for the last five years, and COVID was a huge recipe for us.
I'm sorry to see that.
COVID, using it, being able to use it during COVID and be outside, and in July during COVID, and not, you know, for the tenants. So that was the catalyst for it, and we've taken a lot of it, you know. We've appreciated it since. So I don't know if I would call it a hardship, but it's something that we use very often and has kept me in the house in Asbury.
But there's other outdoor space that you could enjoy if you didn't have that balcony?
The first-floor porch is pretty much my tenants', and the back tenant uses that back patio that we renovated two years ago. So it's not directly off of our apartment, and it's not as convenient, I guess I would say.
Yours, right?
It's not, no, it's shared.
Any further questions for Mr. Viola? Board professionals?
No one in the public? Nope.
Seeing none in the public? Thank you, Mr. Viola.
Thank you. Thank you. Salent swear affirm, the testimony about to give this marriage, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the...
Please state your name for the record.
Kathryn, K-A-T-H-R-Y-N. Gregory, G-R-E-G-O-R-Y.
I'm sorry, G?
R-E-G-O-R-Y.
Okay, thank you. You can sit.
Gregory, can you please give the board a benefit of your qualifications?
Yes, I'm a licensed professional planner at the State of New Jersey. I've been licensed since the year 2000. I am a principal of Gregory Associates, which has been business since 2007. I have testified throughout the state. I'm also a municipal planner myself, obviously in northern Jersey, in Burton County, and the...
We accept your credentials. Thank you.
You've been here before?
Yes, yes, I've been here before with this guy.
Sorry. Mr. Gregory, do you have the opportunity to review the application that was submitted, as well as the order that Asbury Park, in a friendly perspective? Am I correct?
Yes.
Can you please give the board your opinion, first, your findings of fact, and then the conclusions of what you're pulling relative to the variance we've been sought in this application?
Certainly. So we're here tonight seeking expansion of a nonconforming use. As you may well know, this site was rezoned, according to the planner in 2019. I could only find the 2021 ordinance that rezoned this property from the two- and four-family to the one- and two-family zone. I'm going to provide a handout to the board and its professionals.
And what is it for you handed out?
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, it's an 11-by-17 photo exhibit that was prepared by myself. I took some of the photos, but some of the photos are from Google Earth, because they are aerials. It's entitled 614 Fifth Avenue, Asbury Park, New Jersey, existing and surrounding conditions.
Okay, I got it. So it's a photo exhibit?
Okay.
I'm going to mark that as A4.
A4?
A4. Where A1 was the original plan, so it was a photo, A3 was a survey.
Oh, okay. I missed that.
Sorry. I probably shouldn't have seen that.
A3 was a survey?
Correct.
Thank you.
You're going to take some passive notes? Take some passive notes? Take some passive notes? I think I will. Sorry, because maybe you have to do them again. All right. So what you'll see on the photo exhibit is a series of photographs, as I stated. In the upper left-hand corner is a three-dimensional aerial from Google Earth. Also, on the lower left-hand corner is another aerial from Google Earth, which is also three-dimensional. What we have in the upper photograph, we are actually looking north. The property of the applicant is located by the red indicator, at 614 Fifth Ave. You can see that on the map. On the top map, what I have here is an indication of where the zone lines are, and also the yellow numbers are the number of units that are located in each of the respective buildings that are located along Fifth Street in the R2 zone. On the lower aerial, what we have is an aerial that's actually looking at our property and also the fronts of all of the structures that are located on Fifth Avenue, as well as looking at the houses along Pond Street. And superimposed in that particular aerial, kind of in the middle of the photo exhibit, is a picture of the existing house today. I know that everyone is well aware that the actual construction has been accomplished. So this is a picture of what the house looks like today. I know that it's small, and it's a little bit dark. I did take this picture in the winter, unfortunately, and maybe I should take a similar one today. But as we can see, we still do have the pillars, but the difference with, I would say, the majority of what you see in the surrounding area is that the railings are a different color. They happen to be black. In the upper right-hand corner are some examples of the second-floor decks and dockings that are located in the area, and they have the respective addresses alongside their photographs. And the last photograph, or the last aerial, excuse me, that is in the lower right-hand corner, is actually going to be about a discussion, a basis for discussion for the fact that I do not believe that we need setback variances. And that's why I provided that flat aerial. And no, I do not have measurements. I did not measure where houses are, but when I get to that discussion, I think that, again, that saying a picture is worth a thousand words is going to explain why I do not believe that we need any variances for setbacks. So we do need, excuse me, a variance for the expansion of a nonconforming use, which is a D2 variance. Now, unlike an actual use variance, the burden is kind of less than it would be for an actual use variance because the use has already existed in the zone. We are a legal, existing, nonconforming, three-family use. We do need to meet both the positive and the negative criteria for the D2 variance. But with regard to the negative criteria, the courts have found that the board can look at the negative criteria with greater liberality because it will not have such a substantial impairment to the intent purpose of the zone plan because the use already exists. So in terms of that, I do believe that would promote a few of the special reasons. I'm probably going to talk a little bit more about this later on in my testimony as well. But I do believe that would promote Purpose I, which talks about promotion of the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. I would advocate that the public welfare is advanced because the applicant has renovated the property and that second-floor deck is an added improvement. And I know that your planner talks about this in her report, the fact that maybe there would be a financial benefit to the applicant. But I think as a whole, I believe that just the aesthetics alone of the improvements, the fact that we do have the similar type structures with second-floor decks, front decks, front porches in the area, we do reflect what is contained within the area. I also believe that we provide adequate light, air, and open space. We are following existing roof line. So I don't believe there's any, sorry, any impacts of adequate light, air, and open space, particularly with regard to the fact that Fifth Street has 100-foot right-of-way and is located across from the park. We also, when you take a look at the lower right-hand aerial, you'll see that because we are a corner property, we actually have two fronts. So our house is setback further on Bond Street than in any of the other houses. And I'm going to talk about that in a little bit too with the C variances. I also believe we do promote Purpose I, which talks about promotion of a desirable visual impairment. Now, while this house, in objective terms, may not fit the community design standards, it is an improvement to the neighborhood and therefore I do believe in this is an aesthetic improvement. With that said, I think when you take a look at the houses around Fifth Ave, they are not quite as ornate as some of the other homes located in Asbury Park. So I think we are reflective of the neighborhood and therefore I do believe we promote a desirable visual impairment. In terms of the C variances, I don't believe that we need either the front yard setback variance for Fifth Ave or Bond Street. And the reason I say that is you take a look at Note 1 on your bulk table. "The minimum required front yard setback shall be the prevailing setback of principal structures along the same block frontage and facing the same street." Now, that's the note and your master plan actually reflects that and talks about how that should have been incorporated to the zoning ordinance, and it was. So when you take a look at the lower right-hand aerial located on the map, you'll see that along Fifth Avenue, our, actually, our house is setback probably the most along with 604 and 612. And obviously, this is just, this is without measurement, but I think you can see that there's other homes along the street that go in front of ours. So in terms of the prevailing setback, we absolutely meet the prevailing setback. And then when you look at Bond Street, because we are that corner property, we are setback further from all of the houses on the same side of the street. And I think that's really evident on the map and I don't think I really need to go out and start measuring. I don't have the right tools, I'm not an engineer. But with that said, I don't believe that we would need a setback variance for the construction of the deck on the second floor, which is following the existing setback of the existing porch. In terms of community design regulations, this area to me was a, I didn't really think it applied because it talked about a historic district and I tried to look and see about the historic district. It also says in a previous section that the section quoted by your planner, Section 30-64.3 Realization, it applies to all our one and R2 zones. And I do understand about the historic character of Asbury Park. I did brush on this before in terms of the historic character. I think that what happens here is we have a little bit more of a modernization of a historic character. Historic character, I don't think always has to be a replica. And by the way, I do have a Master of Architecture. I do not have an architecture license. I kind of got waysided and I ended up becoming a licensed planner instead. So the architecture kind of fell by the wayside, but I did practice for a couple of years. So I do have a little bit of a background in talking about architecture, I would say. And with that said, even the homes that are in the area that have the second-floor balconies, we look like that, it's just that our railings are a different color. So, you know, with that said, I can guess I can go on to the negative criteria. So in terms of the negative criteria, I already talked about how the D2 variance, the variances are, sorry, negative criteria is with that in greater liberality. And that's in the case of Kingwood versus the Board of Adjustment. That was a 1993 case. The first rung of the criteria is that we have to prove no substantial detriment to the public good. I would say there is no substantial detriment to the public good by the granting of the expansion of the use, which I don't believe is an actual expansion. It does follow the existing setback of the porch, which I mentioned before. I already stated that the property is located on a street that has 100-foot right-of-way width and is across from the park. So we're not really going to affect anybody. It's an open-air structure. It's not as if we're trying to, you know, enclose a second-floor porch. It's an open-air structure. So effectively, we're putting a railing on a roof. As I stated before, the public would be accustomed to this type of architecture, if you will, provided by the pictures located on A4. And I do not believe that, as your planner referred to in her report, that it may represent an increase in intensity. I don't believe that it represents an increase in intensity. I think essentially what you heard from the applicant is he likes his own private outdoor space. It's a three-family. He just wants his private outdoor space. And that doesn't mean that there's going to be an increase in traffic. It doesn't mean that, that there's certain things when you talk about intensity of use. There's no increase in density. We're just adding a private space for the third unit. That's essentially what we're doing. And obviously, it's more convenient to put it on an existing structure than it would be to try to apply for a new structure out in the rear on the second floor because they're already located in the front and there's precedents, you know, already located in Asbury Park. I also believe there's no substantial impairment to the intent purpose of your zone plan and zoning ordinance. I did look at your master plan, your master plan examination. I mean, obviously, back in 2017, there's a very specific section, Section 5.2.2.4, which talks about two- to four-family residential and eliminating three and four, you know, residential units from the ordinance. And I can absolutely respect that because I do understand that, you know, Asbury Park has grown quite a bit in the last 20 years and you want to keep character in certain areas. However, the fact is this is already a three-family. And so therefore, I feel that while, you know, we talk about that particular section, delete three and four-family dwellings, well, obviously, we're already a three-family. I think we have nothing to do with increasing the maximum building coverage, regulate perpous cover, we're not increasing the perpous cover. One of the recommendations was to eliminate the floor area requirement and we're not even increasing that either because that's really what's in the building. And this also talks about amending the front yard setback in this section, which talks about that note that I discussed earlier about the mean setbacks, the average setbacks along each side of the streets. So really, in conclusion, again, I'm going to reference your planner's report. They state on Page 6 that "The inquiry must focus on the quality, character, and intensity of the use viewed in its totality in regard to their overall effect on the neighborhood and the zoning plan and taking into consideration the full scope of conformance with additional regulations." In my opinion, number one, I feel like the only additional regulation would be the community design standards, which isn't a variance, it's a design standard, so that would be a variant, I'm sorry, a waiver. And in terms of quality, I discuss the fact that we did renovate the building and therefore I believe that that represents a much better quality with materials and aesthetics. Character, the addition of the second-floor deck doesn't make this look like a three-family. It still looks like a one-family. So therefore, I believe that we still represent the character of the neighborhood. Again, intensity, I discussed that before. There's really no increase in traffic or density or those types of things by adding a private space for the third unit. And so therefore, I feel like truly the addition of this second-floor deck truly does benefit the neighborhood and the city as a whole. As I stated before, I believe that's an improvement in aesthetic condition. There's really no impact to the neighbors. It does exist in the area. So therefore, I believe that we meet both the positive and the negative criteria for the granting of the D2 variance. And was stated earlier, just as a reference, not saying that we completely qualify, but I think one of the other things that you can consider when you look at the negative criteria is the fact that you do have the ADU variance. So effectively, if this was a two-family house and we wanted to have an ADU, we would apply for a certificate, provided we met all of the qualifications and regulations, but then effectively, the density would be the same. And by the way, the actual distribution of units is a studio, a one-bedroom, and a two-bedroom. So we would, ADU usually is a studio or a one-bedroom and so therefore, we would have one of those contained within the actual structure.
Would that affect whether or not you can have a deck?
Well, if it was a two-family, it would be conforming and we would be able to build that second-floor deck as long as we met the setback requirements. I advocate that we do. I do not believe we need a variance.
But those decks are not permitted.
Second-floor decks are not permitted altogether.
So the conversion to a deck from a roof is what's not permitted under community design regulations?
So that's a waiver.
Which would be a design exception.
That would be a design waiver.
You'd still need a design exception.
That is correct.
Whether it's a two or...
But I'd like us to shift away from this if we were a two-family argument because the ADU regulations are very specifically saying existing, pre-existing legally nonconforming three-family houses are not allowed to have an ADU.
You can put an ADU on a three-family to make a four-family.
Correct.
Correct.
But you can make a two-family into a three-family with one being removed.
No, and the zoning office has already had a ruling on this. A two-family that gains an ADU is not considered a three-family.
It's a two-family plus an ADU.
Yes.
But it's still three living spaces and it can be within one building.
But for zoning purposes, it's not a three-family house.
Re- does that mean it's a two-family?
It's not considered multifamily and under the multifamily law.
What we're getting is leads a little bit here.
ADUs are for family members.
The use of that space is a debt.
Can we just stick with the fact that this is a deck?
The relevant discussion is about the deck.
Forget about the ADUs. This is a deck.
I follow you 100%. Let's just keep going.
Okay, well, I was going to second thought on this.
Yeah, no, no, so you can, you're going to summarize or conclude?
Oh, I, well, I kind of thought I did.
I never suspected you about ADUs.
Oh, no. So, I mean, just to be clear, the ADU discussion was, I think, I think that that is for the fact that, you know, the applicant bought this property as a three-family. And I actually, I'm not 100% sure when the community design standards were adopted.
Community design standards were in the zoning section of the ordinance prior to 2018, so it would have been a variance.
Okay, so they were still there.
But yeah, no, they existed.
It's just that, you know, what basically what it comes down to is no matter if there's anything that he wants to do to this property, he has to come to the zoning board, you know, any kind of, you know, alteration. Yeah, because it's, it sounds nonconforming. But, but, you know, if it was an ADU and a two-family, would he then have to come to the zoning board? You know, it's just...
You wouldn't have the balcony, though.
Yes. Yes, but as a design...
Let's just stay there with the balcony.
Not as a variance, but as a design difference.
Correct, as a design.
Design exception.
Design exception, correct.
The price is different.
Big difference.
Correct.
Correct, rather than an expansion of a nonconforming use.
Right.
And I think that goes to the point that I was trying to make, something that wasn't coming out properly, sorry.
Okay, now you clarify.
Yes.
What's the material of the railing on the deck?
I believe that it's a metal railing. Aluminum. Aluminum. It is a type of that.
Which would cost a lot more.
So just to be clear, the only difference is not just the color, it's also the material versus the images that you've provided of surrounding properties.
Yes, that's true, but most of those, well, I'm going to say not most of those, but some of them will be wooden, but some of them will be...
Every application is on its own merits.
No, no, I understand.
Showing us, showing us houses that have a second-floor deck is not a great argument.
Okay, it's relevant, 100%.
We have to, we have to review this based on its own merits.
It's relevant for the criteria, but look at where they're located. Where are they located?
They're not on Fifth Avenue.
One is... Is 613 Fifth Avenue, was that deck? Is that a conforming property? Is that a nonconforming deck? Or how did that deck get there?
413 Sixth Avenue doesn't even have that second-floor deck anymore.
Right, it was taken.
It was all taken down.
Which one? Oh, 613 Sixth, or 413...
413 Sixth Avenue doesn't exist that way anymore. These pictures aren't even current.
Well, hold on. The deck, the deck's on Fifth Avenue. I've been here since January 1st of 1995.
What's that?
Quite some time. Putting that deck out there would have required a variance unless it pre-existed on 613...
I understand that, Jack. I'm talking about 413 Sixth Avenue. That's gone.
Yeah, okay, so that's gone. But this one here, we don't know how that got there. We don't know what the records, do you have any idea?
That's not even a current picture.
I'm inclined to say Emery, 1207 Emery. I think that might be a violation. Like, I think that's a pending violation.
Can I ask you a question?
For that one.
Okay.
From last year.
I want to ask you a question.
Yes.
Look at this sheet right here, okay?
The survey?
Yeah, the survey. Just, it's just a side yard setback because I'm looking at the left-hand portion of that deck that's close to that other house. That's my, that's my concern. Because it, from this paper, it looks like it's four feet on your property and three feet on the others, so four, like seven feet, .15 inches between the two structures. Is that correct? If I'm misreading this.
She's the planner, Tim.
Oh, okay, well, but it, okay, this deck is within the side yard setback. You're on the second floor next to the upper story of your neighbor, okay? So if he's out on the deck having a phone conversation on that end of the deck next to his neighbor's bedroom, I don't know if it is or not, but it's noise, it's more intense use of that property's space, and how can you not say that's not a negative? I don't understand, but...
To Tim's point, I don't know how it doesn't affect the neighborhood.
How it doesn't affect the neighborhood?
Having the second-floor balcony when the proximity to the neighbor is so close to their second floor.
Well, if somebody was outside, it doesn't matter if they're on the first floor, the second floor, you're still going to hear them typically.
It's the second floor balcony that matters.
The board members have raised this in prior applications that every house, every, there are a substantial number of houses in the city that have open front porches in the front yard. That is a design theme for the town.
Correct.
And we expect those to be public sort of spaces. We engage with streetscape, the environment of the, of the front yard is a semi-public environment in this town. But above that level becomes more of a private space and there is a presumption. We have not codified it, we have not put it into law, but there is a presumption that that space is more private. And that whether it's in the front yard or the backyard or a side yard, you are encroaching on your neighbor's right to privacy.
Correct.
When you are over their living area in that sense.
Are you talking about throughout the entire city, that's your interpretation?
I'm saying in, well, a great, a great wide area of the city. The townhouses on Park Avenue have been held to that standard.
Yes.
There have been other single-family dwellings on the west side.
There's multiple, most of your multi-family, I'm guessing.
My point is that...
Has balconies on the second floor.
Your planner is thinking about what is considered...
Your planner is thinking about what is considered the desirable visual environment and non-impactful compared to what...
No, I'm just pointing out that the statement you just made is 100% incorrect. I think what's relevant here is, from a legal perspective, is you have one opinion that you voiced. We have a board member that either buys into your opinion or doesn't. If she doesn't, and she comes to a different conclusion based on the facts, that's okay. We don't have to get you to agree with us, and we don't have to justify anything more than what you've got, your opinion, and you've got the basis for it, and you read the evidence on how you will please. There's no need for any further discussion. You take from the evidence that's put into the record what you believe to be credible, what you believe not to be credible, what weight you put on the evidence, and you use it for whatever purpose it's intended, and you come to your own conclusions based on the evidence. So if you have a disagreement, we don't have to come to a resolution as to who's right and who's wrong. We just have to come to a conclusion.
Thank you, John.
Ms. Gregory, I want to go back to your testimony. When you looked at this lower photo right here, when you were talking about the setback, you talked about Bond Street, and you rightfully said that your client's property is a corner lot, so you basically have two front yards.
Yes.
But then I believe you went on to say that if you look at the other, from this photo, if you look at the other houses from this perspective, it's clear that they don't have the same setback. But I just want to clarify, you mentioned that your client has two front yards, so therefore, they wouldn't have the same setback requirements as those other houses on Bond.
Yes, they would. They have two front yards, and so Bond Street, the front yard.
But people on Bond Street have to have a front yard setback. It has the same distance as one's...
Right, exactly. I just want to make that point further.
But the houses on Bond Street are closer to the front yard line.
Right.
And the lots are smaller.
I just want to make that clear. Thanks.
I will say, though, the ordinance says the prevailing setback may be applied. That is not an administrative thing that can be done by the zoning officer to determine. That's you guys. If you feel that there's some criteria that are met, and we've done that exercise as well, Second Avenue.
I've done it numerous times. Planners or architects have been given us distances, and they conduct the average within 200 feet, and all of that, and they come up with standards. So I get what you're saying. It's fair comment.
Ms. Gregory, could you just explain a little bit further for me regarding our planner's report with the enhanced use?
You mean intensification?
Yeah, so we've established that the patio is just for the use of your client.
Correct.
So help me overcome how that is not an enhanced return for the owner, your client, that only he's using it.
That is improper, you cannot consider that.
No? Okay.
Well, but I do have to say, though, we are just merely tenants of these homes. Mr. Viola may one day sell his property, but let me finish, Mr. Karas, and somebody else may make that a party deck, and the intensification becomes quite different. He may say this is for his private use, but that may not be true 10 years from now. It may be a big party house deck with a huge outdoor deck.
To decide the issue of intensification of use, it isn't a matter of more people. It's a matter to what extent the entire property, the use is being intensified.
But that could change, Jack.
If you're going out to an area that's never been used by people...
That's intensification.
By its very definition, you're intensifying the use of the property by going out and using the deck. The issue then becomes, is it an acceptable intensification for you in order to grant a variance? The witness would like to have you think that, or agree with it. If you don't, you don't. That's, it isn't about whether or not more people can occupy, it's about using the entire, you're extending the area and intensification of the use of this property by creating a deck where one doesn't exist.
Thank you.
Whether or not it's an acceptable increase is up to you.
Mr. Viola, have any of your neighbors complained about the deck in there?
None.
Okay, that's one. Two, your ability, sitting on that corner, to look into someone's house. Have anyone complained to you about you looking into my house or anything like that?
None.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for Ms. Gregory?
I appreciate Ms. Gregory bringing us the, even though the photos are somewhat outdated, you've given us at least an idea of how the house sits, and it has not violated the flavor of the neighborhood. And I know I'm talking without asking the question, but do you feel that you have, I'm going to make a question, okay? Do you feel that you have violated the neighbors and how their houses are built, basically what I would refer to as the flavor the neighborhood put based on the work that you have done?
Well, yeah, I think I spoke about before. As I stated, there are some other areas that I would call, I think, were neat in this particular area, and I think it's because we do have that mix. We have a bunch of apartment buildings that were built in the 60s and 70s, while we do have the single-family residential character in this house that still thinks it needs it. Maybe it's not as historic as somebody would want, but this particular block is not as historic or nately historic, as I would say, as some other streets that are located in Esprit Park.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Ms. Gregory? Board professionals?
No.
I'll open it up for public, but no public. So, thank you, Ms. Gregory.
Thank you.
Mr. Karas?
I have no further comments.
I'll open it up for public comment, seeing none. I'll close public comment. Do you have a final statement to make, Mr. Karas?
Yes. As indicated by the planner, based upon the criteria that is required by the D2 variance that's made of the legal act right here, the special reasons have been provided. There is extensive damage to the second-floor deck, as indicated on the client that in the case, and by the claim that was, or looking in, anything like that. There is a history of having these types of second-floor decks that any areas provided that the authority shows basically was presented for. Based upon that, we have satisfied the criteria for D2 F4.
Thank you, Mr. Karas. So at this point, I guess it's back to us.
Yes, it is.
Does anyone have any comments to make?
The, just from procedural perspective, D2, D variances, including D2, require five affirmative votes, not a simple majority of sound members.
Thank you, Jack.
Sorry for the interruption.
That's all right. That's all right. We understand a D requires five votes, five affirmative votes.
So, okay, Mr. Viola, sitting on this board, I've seen people who made improvements on the house, they've done far, far more egregious than what you've done, okay? I think you respected the flavor of the neighborhood. I don't have any problem with what you've done. I wish you had have come before earlier, but you showed me somebody who hasn't made a mistake. I showed you someone who hasn't done anything. Okay, so with that, I'm fine with what you have. I would like to see it through.
Any other comments?
I respect my fellow board member's opinion. I think based on the limited photos that you submitted, I don't think that this fits into the existing area, and I think this is a expansion of a nonconforming property.
That's agreed, yes. Whether or not you grant a variance, it's up to you.
Anyone else for a comment?
Yeah, I'll say something. I know Jill had mentioned or had asked if there was a hardship. I think COVID was a hardship for everybody, and this was born out of a hardship, which I could understand. I don't necessarily see this being something that inhibits anybody else in the neighborhood, nor do I see this being something that really goes against the community design. So I also agree, Mr. Harris, that this is something that is a net positive for the city, and there's very little detriment.
I have to agree with my partner here, John, in that I think there's a substantial increase in use of this. And the fact that you're coming here after already doing it, begging for forgiveness versus getting approval, so that the intensity use is what I'm stuck with and that I'm not pleased with, that I don't think that you proved that there's not that intensity, and that's where I'm at.
I agree with my colleagues as well about the intensification of usage. Design-wise, I think it looks good, but it's the usage. I'm concerned about the neighbor on the left, so that's where I'm at, I'm sitting.
Sorry, one more thing. If we are concerned with usage, I am curious, Donna, you had mentioned about a permit that we don't really have much information on. Why would we approve a door in a flat roof without the potential expectation of a roof deck even though it's not allowed?
Again, I don't have anything that shows me there was a door.
No, I understand that, but I think that there's still lingering questions also that I understand that we had a different type of roof that wouldn't have even, this wouldn't even be a conversation, that the city allowed it to move forward at the flat roof. So I think this is kind of the nature of the beast, that we allowed part of it. Granted, we don't need to allow the rest of it, but I think it's foolish for us to approve half of it and then come back and say, oh, well, it's an intensification. It was then, maybe it is now, but I still agree that this should be allowed.
But just for the record, the board didn't approve a variance for the door.
No, I didn't see anything about the board permit.
Secondly, the permit specifically, correct me if I'm wrong, the permit specifically said no second-floor deck.
Correct.
So this wasn't as, you can come back for, again, and ask for, it specifically had that language.
No, I just... No, I was just mentioning that, yeah, I think it's ironic, that's all.
Well, John, to your point, you, John, sometimes there's doors, and then there's a Juliet balcony, right? So that there's not something else, like a front balcony.
For sure.
There's something that allows for the doors opening. So I just wanted to say that.
This is just meant for comment right now. I don't want the board members getting into arguments.
Oh, it wasn't an argument.
I appreciate it. I'm not arguing.
No, I was just helping.
Sorry.
So, does anyone want to make a motion?
Tim, D.
Oh, sorry. Chris?
I'm going to reserve my comment to the vote.
Anyone want to make a motion for or against?
I'd make a motion for.
Is Natalie, you're in favor of?
Yes, please.
Second.
Was that Dan, was that you?
Yes. Motion's been seconded.
Daniel Harris.
Yes.
Jill Potter.
No.
Tim Slick.
No.
Natalie Passerini.
Yes.
John Hall.
Yes.
Vice Chair Scully.
No.
And Chairman Avaloni.
I too feel it's an intensification of a nonconforming use, and vote no.
Thank you. Yeah, and I'm not going to go on a negative vote.
It was...
No, you haven't received votes.
Leave it back together.
Yeah, so, yeah.
It might have been...
You're all right.
Yeah.
Okay.
John.
We don't need to...
Motion to adjourn. Because sometimes we do that.
Second, for the motion to adjourn.
Is that Natalie? You think that was a motion? Second motion?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second, second. Okay, all in favor and opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Not opposed.